Morning County Council, now call the meeting to order and call the roll. So from the Asheville Norwood Township, we have Councillor Pat Wilford.
Here.
Deputy Mayor of Asheville Norwood, Councillor Laurie Burt.
I'm here.
Mayor of Kavon Monaghan. Councillor Matthew Graham.
Present.
Deputy Mayor of Kavon Monaghan.
Present.
Ryan Huntley. The Mayor of Durodummer, Councillor Heather Watson.
Good morning.
Deputy Mayor of Durodummer, Councillor Harold Nelson.
Present.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor of Havelock Belmont Mathuen, Councillor Jim Martin.
Present.
And the Deputy Mayor of Havelock Belmont Mathuen, Hart Webb.
Present.
Mayor of North Coortha, Councillor Carolyn Amiot.
Morning.
The Deputy Mayor of North Coortha, Jim Whalen.
Here.
Mayor of Autonoby South, Monaghan, Councillor Joe Taylor.
I am here.
And our Deputy Mayor of Autonoby South, Monaghan and the Warden is not available now, but she will be with us online for our closed session. We have the Mayor of Selwyn, myself. And the Deputy Mayor of Selwyn, Councillor Ron Black. Mayor of Trent Lakes, Terry Lamb's Head.
I am present.
And the Deputy Mayor of Trent Lakes, Councillor Carol Armstrong.
Present.
Thank you. We'll now take a moment. Oh, no, we're going to hear the land acknowledgement. With deep respect, we acknowledge the lands and interconnected waterways that bind us together, the foundation for all life. These lands serve as a keeper of history and stories and are a source of inspiration. In recognizing this, we embrace that all living things possess an important energy and purpose. We extend the utmost gratitude to the original peoples who have been caretakers of these lands and waters of this region from time immemorial and to this day who continue this commitment. Peterborough County's dedication to reconciliation remains steadfast. In this spirit, we are committed to nurturing meaningful partnerships and connections that contribute to an environment of prosperity and well-being for all generations to come. This acknowledgement is made on the Treaty 20 land and the territory of the Michisawig and Nishinawig and within the traditional lands of the Michisawig and Chipewa nations, collectively known as the Williams Treaty First Nations. Further, our gratitude is extended to the nations of Alderville, Bozalay, Curve Lake, Georgina Island, Hiawatha, Rama and Skugog Island. We'll now have a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. We have the agenda before us. I need someone to adopt it. Can I have someone to move the agenda? Moved by Councillor Hart Webb and seconded by Councillor Burt. All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Is there a disclosure of pecuniary interest in any agenda item? If so, please disclose your interest in the general nature thereof now or at the time that we talk about it. We have adoption of the minutes. The minutes of March the 5th, 2025. Someone to move that. Councillor Watson, seconded by Councillor Lamb's Head. All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. And our first item of business is a delegation by Mariette Pushkar, the Principal of Fluvial Geomorphologist, Montrose Environmental. Mariette, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm here today with Margot Ursick and Margot is going to begin our presentation.
Good morning, everyone. So today we are here to speak to you briefly about Peterborough County's first watershed plan. So Mariette, if you could please move on to the next slide.
Sorry, I'm just having some difficulty, it seems.
Nothing like starting off the morning with a little tech issue. All right, great. There we go. Thank you.
Okay.
So, here we are. I'd like to introduce, start by introducing Mariette Pushkar, who is the project manager, as well as myself, Margot Ursick. I am wearing two hats for this, both the engagement specialist and the natural heritage lead. And it is just the two of us here today, but we are being supported by a large multidisciplinary team of people with expertise in a variety of disciplines. We have Ron Scheckenberger, who's the Senior Water Engineer and Advisor. And with Montrose Environmental, we have a suite of experts in groundwater. I won't go through all of the names here, surface water, fluvial geomorphology, I know it's quite a mouthful, geographic information systems, natural heritage and many other supporting personnel. Next slide, please. So we are also working very closely on this project with three people in particular from the county. So Ian Mudd, who as you know is the Director of Planning, Kaziah Holden, who's General Manager of Planning, and then supported by Doug Sakocha, who is the General Manager of Engineering and Construction, and then again with support from various other people. Next slide, please, Mariette. So what we are going to talk to you about today is basically, why have a watershed plan? What is a watershed plan equivalent, which is what this one is going to be? And then overview of the project phasing and engagement, I'll be passing it over to Mariette and then she will speak to you about the phasing and then the preliminary findings so far, as well as next steps and anticipated outcomes of the project. So, why have a watershed plan? There's a number of technical and policy reasons. First of all, watersheds, I think as many of you know, are areas of land that drain rainfall and runoff basically towards a single common outlet. So watershed and sub watershed study areas are identified based on local topography and drainage. And watershed plans study both the water and the terrestrial or natural systems within their boundaries to assess often their responses to proposed land use changes and other stressors, including climate change. So as such, these studies are important to support environmentally sound land use planning at various scales. Next slide, please, Mariette. There is also a strong, oops, I think we jumped ahead one there, strong policy rationale at the provincial level. There we go, thank you. So the most recent provincial planning statement identifies very explicitly that watershed is the appropriate ecologically meaningful scale for long-term planning and for integrated planning. And it also encourages municipalities and requires large municipalities to undertake watershed planning to inform things like sewage and water services, stormwater management, as well as looking at things like low-impact development and opportunities to restore the quality and quantity of water and associated terrestrial systems. Next slide, please. So, why is the county moving forward with this now? So watershed plan has been identified, again, I think perhaps as many of you probably knows, a priority action item in the county's strategic plan, partly because of growth pressures in various areas across the county. And so this is a very high-level county-wide watershed plan that will provide a basis and framework for future sub watershed studies that are based on local priorities. This high-level plan will provide basically a framework, both planning and management guidance to support growth, infrastructure planning and restoration efforts to ensure that planning is done in a sustainable and environmentally responsible manner. Next slide, please. So why do we call this a watershed plan equivalent? Well, basically watersheds in Ontario are categorized at various scales. So you've got primary, so draining into the St. Lawrence, secondary draining into St. Lake Ontario, tertiary, so for example, the Autonoby River, and then quaternary, so quite a few different scales. And Peterborough County is responsible for watershed planning at both the tertiary and the quaternary level. Again, I think as you probably know, the county is almost 4,000 square kilometers, so quite a large area, covered by many rivers, lakes, woodlands, wetlands. And there is increasing development pressures on the south, as well as concerns related to climate change impacts and managing the water resources. So the watershed plan equivalent is basically the first step. A high-level plan that's going to be informed by desktop sources. So that is the key difference between an equivalent versus a more detailed sub watershed study. We won't be doing any field work, so we are basing this study as on existing resources and intended to support official planning, sorry, support official planning as allowed by the province. And this plan will provide the framework for future more detailed studies, as I mentioned. Next slide, please. So this watershed plan will be based on a range of different resources and information. And we've been spending the past few months going through and connecting with various agencies and other individuals who have been sharing the available data with us, the county and the conservation authorities, as well as many others, municipalities. And we have been gathering current and planned land cover types, groundwater and source water protection layers, layers about water courses, drainage systems, both groundwater and surface water quality monitoring, topography and slopes, soils information, natural hazards and erosion, and then as well as fish habitat, aquatic habitat, terrestrial system, so mapping about woodlands, wetlands, wildlife habitat and species at risk. So we've been gathering all of that. And I am going to now pass it over to Mariette and she will provide you with a bit more information about the project and some of our preliminary findings.
Thank you, Margot. So as Margot has outlined, we are starting this study. It actually began in September and began with a project launch and background review. So we've got three different phases in the study. The first one is really setting the context of all of the work that happens subsequently. And this includes, as Margot mentioned, the obtaining of background information, mapping, reports and so on, and establishing contact with all of those that are interested in and have information about each of the tertiary watersheds. So we've established contact with member municipalities, First Nations and conservation authorities, and then also additional groups to obtain all of their information. Phase two builds on the background review that we complete and the gap analyses and really starts to establish a characterization of the watersheds within the county. And then this forms a basis for developing a vision, objectives and goals for the county. And then that in turn starts to inform some of the planning strategies for the county. Phase three builds on that work and really starts to identify a watershed planning and management recommendations that will be used to guide management of the county and watersheds and which the municipalities also then use to inform updates to their official plans. An integral component within developing the watershed plan is the engagement. We know that we are coming in as consultants and have much to learn about the area. And so we really work in collaboration with members of the engagement committees, which include the council, the technical advisory committee, the First Nations and the external parties that have interest and information about the county. And this engagement occurs in each of the three phases of study. In phase one, it is the obtaining of background information and mapping. In phase two, it's specifically to help develop the vision, objectives and goals for the county that is rooted in an understanding of the county, the existing watershed characterization. And then that rolls into phase three where we look for input from each of the engagement groups in developing the management and monitoring recommendations for the county. With respect to the engagement, the technical advisory committee includes each of the eight member municipalities, as well as the city of Peterborough. We've got two local First Nations and then we also have the four conservation authorities. These are all represented in the technical advisory committee, who is, and they've been involved in every step of the way so far. We've had a kickoff meeting earlier and then now we're going with the phase one findings shortly to them. In addition to the TAC, we have reached out to First Nations and local organizations as part of the extended consultation. So this includes additional First Nation communities that have interest in the area, as well as a range of different local organizations. Now we have received background reports and mapping already and have been reviewing these to determine what information is available and where there may be some gaps. And some of the findings that we're going to present are presented in our draft memo or first stage of reporting that has been submitted to the county. So preliminary findings is that there are five tertiary watersheds. So the county is responsible for managing and providing a watershed plan for each of these tertiary watersheds. And within these tertiary watersheds, there are a total of 26 quaternaries of watersheds, so a smaller scale. There we go. In terms of the available information, we've received many mapping layers and many reports that we have reviewed. And what we have found is that there is a good high-level coverage of a lot of the disciplines and that we are looking at, specifically high-level coverage of hydrogeology or groundwater mapping, soils, topography and major water courses, high-level natural heritage system mapping, and also information about aquatic and terrestrial species at risk, and a few types of significant wildlife habitat as well. What we are finding is that the coverage is particularly good in the southern part of the county where we have good coverage of groundwater monitoring wells, reporting and modeling, and vegetation community mapping. What I forgot to mention earlier is that as part of our phase two, there will be a preliminary natural heritage system mapping developed, as well as a water resource system. There we go. And in terms of data gaps, what we have found is that there is limited information regarding erosion, also limited groundwater monitoring wells and reporting in the northern part of the county. There is no floodplain mapping available for Crow Valley Conservation Authority and Ganaraska region, no surface water quality monitoring stations in the northern half of the county, and also no vegetation community mapping for the Autonoby or the Crow Valley Conservation Area jurisdictions that we have found to date. So in terms of the next steps, oops, I'm not sure what happened here. Here we go. In terms of the next steps, we are wrapping up our phase one background review of the study. So we have completed confirmation of watershed and sub watershed boundaries. Sometimes there can be different, because mapping is done on different data sources, that could be different map boundaries. So we looked at those to make sure that they are consistent, because of course, this is important for all of the characterization that proceeds. That has been resolved with any items that were identified. The data gap analysis has been completed and we are currently engaging with the council, the technical advisory committee, First Nations and other interested parties as part of our phase one consultation. We are now starting to proceed into phase two, where we are taking all of the information from the background reports and mapping and starting that watershed characterization. As we proceed with that, we will be developing the water vision goals and objectives and presenting that to all of the engagement parties to receive input and help refine those. And then that will again provide basis for some of the planning strategies that will be developed in phase two and then supporting phase three as well. So in terms of the watershed plan equivalency, Margot has already provided an overview of what it entails and how it comes to be. Really, it's intended to inform future updates to the county and local municipal official plans to ensure that it is in accordance with provincial direction regarding the water resource system and natural heritage system. It's going to be in a collaboration with the local municipalities, conservation authorities and First Nations and others in the community to develop a framework for future more detailed planning. So again, this is the watershed plan that we're developing is based on background information, no field data or no new analysis, really. It is looking at what is available, identifying gaps and then helping to guide future sub watershed planning and studies that will be helpful to inform planning for future development and growth and transportation and so on. And so again, it provides high-level planning and technical guidance to help protect water resources and the natural heritage system, to help sustainably manage land use and growth in the context of climate change, and also to consider cumulative cross-jurisdictional and cross-watershed impacts. We're happy to take any questions or comments that you may have at this time.
All right, thank you very much. And I see that we have Janet Lovey Smith here, who's the CAO for ORCA. I'm not sure if you're here out of interest for this particular subject matter, but welcome. Are there any questions for our delegation? Councillor, oh, sorry. Councillor Amiot, and then I see Councillor Black. Oh, and Councillor Lamb's Head.
Carrie was first.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I just have a couple of comments. I know that in the northern part of our county, which is partially Trent Lakes and North Coortha, is, we do have a fair bit of ories that do have groundwater monitoring wells. So I mean, that might be an asset to be looking into. And Trent Lakes does have some floodplain mapping of Miss Wazeebe River and I believe some of No Gook's Creek. So those might be documents you might want to look up.
Through the, through the Warden, thank you. That's great information. We'd love to have any contacts, information, if you have emails or phone numbers, and then we can follow up with those. If you would be so kind as to forward those to us, you could do that through Ian Mudd, or yeah, that might be best.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Amiot.
Yes, thank you. Through you and Carrie, I didn't want to steal your thunder, because I always do that. I thought you were going to say some other stuff, but anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate the, the information you've provided. And I did also want to suggest another contact. There is an organization called QUF, which is the Coalition for Equitable Water Flow, was formed 20 years ago in response to the panel on the future of the Trent Severn Waterway, representing the interests of reservoir flow-through lakes. And since that time, QUF has helped to create the Upper Trent Water Management Partnership, which is sort of facilitated through Halliburton County, but Trent Lakes and North Coortha municipalities are members of it because we are connected through that watershed. And through that, we are now, and Carol Armstrong, I believe, is with me on it too, but we are exploring the formation of an Upper Trent Watershed Council. Ted Spence is the co-chair, or is the Chair of QUF and co-chair for Atwumpen. He is an excellent resource. He's a resident of Trent Lakes as well. And I will be happy to pass along his information. I think definitely reach out to them. They've got a lot of good information, good connections, especially with the TSW. But even up in Halliburton, there's the Ulinks, which studies water quality and quantity, because we all know it's all connected, right? And, and we are the source. All our water's going down to the south anyway and further and beyond. So I, I think that would be some, another connection for you folks to, to reach out to and gather information and share as well.
Yeah, through you. Thank you so much, Carolyn. That's great information. If you are able to also pass along contacts and specifically to Ian Mudd, if you are able to, that will be helpful and we will follow up. That's fabulous. Thank you.
Yeah, Mariette, sorry, I just wanted to jump in and say, we have reached out to Ted and I believe he will be attending our stakeholder session next week. Awesome. Yeah, good.
Okay.
All right, we'll now go to Councillor Black and then following Councillor Ryan.
Thank you. Through you, Deputy Warden. Thanks for the presentation. Excellent overview of the project itself. One of the challenges that I think is out there is, is what floodplain mapping should be done as a priority. I know with through ORCA, we do one or two every year, try to bring that to the ORCA board, which we have a presentation tomorrow on one of those mapping exercises. Will the study produce, again, I know it's a desktop and those are always challenging because you're using aerial mapping in a lot of cases to identify those areas, which are often not 100% correct. Will you be recommending floodplain mapping priorities for the county as part of the recommendations from the study? Will that, because that's always a challenge for the county. Where do we go next? Which, what do we do next? And there's always that, you know, that communication with ORCA. What are they doing? What is the county going to be doing? That sort of thing. Will there be recommendations on priority for floodplain mapping coming out of that study?
Yeah, through you, Warden. Yes, the study will be identifying priorities for sub watershed studies, which would include the floodplain mapping.
Thank you.
Councillor Huntley.
Sub Warden or Deputy Warden, whatever we call you today. I just want to say, I'm very happy to see this report come forward. I'm happy to see the amount, the amount of work going into it. And as, you know, we've alluded to for a few years, we knew that there was an immense amount of information out there, all in little pockets. And it just, it really needed some coordination to pull that all together. And I'm sure there's an absolute mountain of information that you're still sifting through. And as you just heard, there's even more information out there, which I'm sure will keep getting uncovered. And all of this is for, for the greater good. And I'm glad that, you know, we're finally coordinating all of that information and, you know, we can eventually put it together to use and, you know, move forward as some more coordinated effort. So thank you for all your work so far. Looking forward to the next steps.
Through you, Warden. Thank you very much. There is a lot of information, for sure. It, it's, it's good to see that information. It helps to solidify that characterization and make sure that it's a sound characterization.
All right, if there are no other questions, we need a motion to receive the presentation. Moved by Councillor Huntley, seconded by Councillor Whalen. All in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. Now we have a number of consent items. Have you received any requests to pull anything? Is there anything that anyone wants pulled from this consent list? All right, then I need a motion to receive, oh, sorry. Councillor Martin.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't get my hand up in time, but through you, I, I'm, number 8A, with regards to the community care, mobile bus thing there. That's a good report and it's something that I haven't seen in a while, so I'm glad to see it come forward. There's a few questions around that that I'll probably bring forward in the future, but done on how it's advertised and how people find out about it, because the numbers seem really low in Havelock Belmont Mathuen. And I keep hearing that we don't have anything and there is something here that doesn't seem to be getting used to its fullest. So I'm glad to see this back on the agenda. It used to come up every quarter and I haven't seen it in a while, so thank you for that.
All right, thank you. And if there's nothing else that needs pulling, oh, Councillor. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Warden. Send us. I, it's 8A, the purchasing policy, and I emailed Jennifer yesterday with a question about it. And Jennifer, you answered the question, but I'm still having difficulty understanding the necessity of this particular bullet. And I wondered if you could explain it further, help me understand. And the one I'm referring to is, the county will provide preferences for those businesses. And there's a little more verbiage. And then the bullet that has at least 250 full-time employees in Ontario at the time of the procurement process. And I'm having difficulty understanding why we are targeting, specifically targeting companies that large, 250 employees. Could you help me understand that? Because I, unfortunately, yesterday, Jennifer, in the answer you provided, I still didn't get the, the level of detail I was looking for.
Sure, through the Deputy Warden. So the intent with this is recognizing that there may be a business within Ontario that is actually owned by a company outside of Canada, but they employ a large number of employees. And so we want to be cognizant of the fact that, yes, we would like people to shop local and buy local, but in some cases, those companies that are not owned by Canadian business, they're not owned in, in Canada or in Ontario, are actually employing a large number of employees within the county. And we want to make sure that those employees are able to keep their job. So by, you know, if you use the example of Home Hardware versus Home Depot, Home Hardware is locally owned, their franchise is a Canadian company. So preference would likely be that we would want to use a home hardware, as an example. But we have to recognize that Home Depot, although it's a US company, is employing a But we have to recognize that Home Depot, although it's a US company, is employing a large number of people that could in fact be our residents. And we want to make sure our residents are able to keep their job, stay employed, all of those things. And so that's really the intent of looking at both. Um, from a practical perspective, when we actually issue our RFPs or tenders, um, we'll be looking at what it is we're trying to buy, understanding what the local market looks like and modifying the document um, as far as how we're going to give points to the various businesses so we can tailor it that way. Um, but from the perspective of doing the policy, we want to keep it fairly broad so that we're not handcuffing ourselves from being, you know, disqualifying a company on something that we otherwise wouldn't want to.
Follow up if I can. Uh, and I I I understand the concept. And I agree with that. But what I don't understand is the two hundred and fifty. I mean, are we hamstring ourselves that we now cannot consider a company that only employs a hundred employees? And that's and that's still fairly large corporation. So why the two fifty? That's a part that I have difficulty with.
So through the deputy warden, the two fifty, this this actual language was taken from a provincial document. So we're not tied to the two fifty. We could change it to a hundred. We could change it to fifty. Um, but the two fifty was a document that was the two hundred and fifty employees was a document issued by the problems.
Yeah, there's there's in in the business world, uh, the government recognizes a small business as one that employs less than a hundred people. But that's a government business. In the real business world, a hundred employees or more is not a small business. That's a very large one. So that's the difficulty I'm having here. If we want to try and help the small businesses, and they're going to need some help through through this, we can't be eliminating the ones that that only employ fifty or seventy-five or a hundred people. And that's my concern, Jennifer.
So through the deputy warden, that would only apply if it was a business that's owned by somebody outside of Canada.
Right, I understand that.
Right?
Yeah.
So otherwise, if it's locally owned and they have five employees, they would get full, they would, it would apply.
I understand.
Um, so we can change that number to whatever number we want. We're not tied to the two fifty. The desire of councils to have a lower number, we can easily change that.
Okay.
Perhaps we could change, uh, change it to up to two hundred. Would that make you feel better? Up to two hundred and fifty?
And it could be over two fifty. I just, I don't know how you phrase it to capture those businesses that may need local support. So uh, I'm I'm comfortable with not having a number in there, but understanding the concept of US-owned but locally employed people. But I don't know that we should hamstring ourselves by having a specific number there because sure is there's going to be something come along that won't fit in those narrow parameters.
So the only caution with not putting a number in there is that you could have I was an example at one point in my life where I worked for a company outside of Canada. I was one employee working in Canada, and I don't think that's our intent either. So I think there is uh, a spot in the middle.
Okay.
Um, what we could normally when we bring forward a policy, we would have a a resolution that gives council some time to comment on it. We didn't with this because obviously there's a desire to get it in place as quick as possible. Um, but we could leave it, we could add a motion that council, you know, come back to us by the end of next week with any comments that they have. Uh, and we could bring this back for approval at the next council meeting if we wanted to have further discussion about what that two fifty should look like.
So so why don't why don't we maybe we approach it this way, Deputy Warden, is is once all council members had a chance to comment, whatever that might be, I'll put forward a motion. I'll just amend this number a little bit.
To amend it to?
To amend it to. I think I'm going to suggest that we approve the policy, but amend that second bullet point to, I'll say a hundred employees or more.
Okay.
Sorry. Well, there's some concern with that, too.
Is there someone that would want to second that? Counselor Webb? Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment? That is carried. Yes, that's right. So uh, the I've said it a couple of times, but we are now looking for a motion to receive the balance of the consent items. Moved by Counselor Nelson, seconded by Counselor Wilford, all in favor. Carrie, thank you very much. We're now going to hear from Brent Abel, the Deputy Chief of P C C P for Community Programming and Emergency Management. Oh, we're going to hear from Trish. We lost them. We do have a timed close at ten thirty, so no matter what we're doing, we're going to have to go into closed. Yeah, we do. I'm afraid to send somebody to get them. You might lose them too.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Apologies, bad time for a break. So yeah, um, thanks for having me. Uh, I want to present a, an update on the Community Paramedic Program in Peterborough and also go over the proposed temporary staff enhancement. So I wanted to start it with a brief overview of the programs that we currently have, the staffing levels that we currently have. Um, we go to the next slide, please. So this is what our current complement looks like. Um, so the majority on the left there, we have our enhanced community paramedics and our community paramedics, uh, for long-term care. Uh, this is comprised of thirteen community paramedics, one admin support and one superintendent. Uh, that's the majority of our of our workforce. They I'm going to go a little more into what their day-to-day looks like in the next slide, but then we also have our our community paramedic outreach program. That's currently just the one paramedic. Um, we're also going to discuss that a little further into the presentation. Um, and then we also operate two uh, community paramedics at the consumption and treatment site. Uh, in case of emergency, obviously, for the the nature of of that site. Um, yeah, the reason we're here today, programs at a critical juncture. We're one year left of our trial funding as of April first. Um, so we're ending the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Um, and we're approaching an opportunity where we have one-year window to really showcase the program, really put forward some good numbers, some good data. And just really go towards the longevity of the program. Uh, we anticipate in the near future, there will be um, an announcement on potential long-term funding. We could end up in another situation where we're in another three-year trial. I mean, all depends on what the the provincial government decides to do with it. Uh, let me go to the next slide, please. So yeah, as I discussed, this is kind of what our day-to-day services look like. Um, it's really centered around, you know, in-home wellness checks, putting eyes on patients that are actually in their homes. Uh, we're focused on people that live alone by themselves. Uh, you know, the community paramedics are really set up well to do system navigation and referrals. Uh, we can help clients connect with local services and resources. Uh, really maintain and improve their health. Um, you know, we're in the community, we're looking to do an overall reduction of unnecessary hospital visits and improve overall community health. Uh, a lot of these people, a lot of these people that we see in the community, um, you know, have issues with getting to traditional settings. They they could be unattached, not having family doctors or family clinics. So we're really, we're trying to be that gap filler that the the community needs and we can really help the residents of Peterborough County and city. So here's really the need of what I'm up here today. Uh, I kind of went over a little bit of what the program looks like, and this is what we're proposing going forward. Um, the issue that we see is the administrative burden is falling to the community paramedics. And it's reducing amount of time that the community paramedics actually have dealing with patients. Um, so we're looking to increase the capacity of actual patient load, time on patients, um, by putting the correct administrative backbone in place behind it. So what this looks like, um, we're proposing an administration coordinator. So somebody in the background that's going to help with program coordination, community assessment, stakeholder engagement, regulatory regulatory compliance, uh, because our funding is streamed through both Ontario Health and Long-Term Care. So we have uh, quite a bit of of reporting that's that's required of us um, for record keeping, for data collection, patient advocacy, program evaluation. Uh, essentially somebody who's doing the the larger projects in the background. Um, then also having an administration support, somebody who's answering the phones, making sure the the appointments are are set, that the community paramedics are are assigned out and that the the phone is answered, really. Um, but they're a primary contact for the public health and allied health professionals. Just with how we're integrated with local, um, physicians' offices and and many different referring partners. Um, you know, they're going to help with scheduling appointments, maintaining client records, data entry, record keeping and clerical support. And just supporting the daily schedules and coordination of client visits. Um, another need that we've noticed is, um, another logistics staff support. So currently, the community paramedic program, which is, as you saw before, is it's growing. And we're we're a bit of a drain on the current logistics staff for the nine-one-one uh, component. Uh, so this point five logistics staff is a way of compensating on the the nine-one-one side that we're we're kind of taking care of our own house. Um, so the nine-one-one logistics is currently maintaining the community paramedic fleet. Um, you know, ordering supplies, maintaining equipment. And um, it's it's disruptive to the nine-one-one side. So this is an acknowledgement of that and that we can take care of our own. Um, and lastly, we're also looking to enhance by another three community paramedics. Um, the the first two is going to be in remote patient monitoring. Um, now I can go into a little more detail on this further on, but essentially remote patient monitoring, we have a community paramedic currently that sits Monday to Friday at a desk. We have somewhere around a hundred and thirty patients at home that they they're set up with a tablet and a scale, a blood pressure machine, pulse oximetry. They're able to manually input blood glucose, blood glucose readings, um, temperatures. Essentially, they have a paramedic they're uploading data to regularly. And um, this person only currently works Monday to Friday. And um, so the paramedic works with the team then and the patient's healthcare providers to track conditions. And really to prevent admissions and readmissions to the hospital. The reason for the two new positions is we want to go away from the Monday to Friday model. And the two new positions allow for a seven-day-a-week, twelve-hour support instead of the current Monday to Friday, eight-hour support. Uh, in discussion with the current person in in that position, they arrive on a Monday morning and typically get sixty to a hundred and twenty active alerts. This can take the entire their first day just catching up with what's happened over the weekend. And it has to be stressful to our clients that don't have the support through the weekend. Um, each new enrollment on top of this takes thirty minutes of administrative time. And depending on the technical literacy of the actual person that they're going into the home and getting them set up with, that's another hour or two per setup in home. Um, the other, the other bonus of this, having these additional positions on top of the Monday to Friday position is that the community paramedics are going to have this overflow capacity built in. So they're they're going to walk in and have the the first half of their day where they're addressing the remote patient monitoring needs. And the last half of their day, they can, and we can discuss this a little more further as we get along. But they're able to backfill the other community paramedics. They're able to address in-day needs. Um, you know, somebody, somebody's reached out who doesn't have a regularly scheduled appointment that all of a sudden means one now. And this this is something we can really target and and help people in home in time right now and stop them from either, you know, starting a nine-one-one process or ending up at at Peterborough Regional Health Center. Um, and lastly, we're also looking for one more community paramedic for the Community Paramedic Outreach Program. Um, now this is a service that is in the community, providing care to the vulnerable populations. Um, the both in the city and the county. Um, primarily those that are unsheltered, underhoused. Um, you know, dealing with mental health and addiction challenges. Um, they they have a variety of responsibilities. Uh, some of the specialized treatments, consultations and referrals for at-risk individuals uh, are surrounding specialized room care. And um, the need is there because this this specific type of of our community, uh, they're very adverse to institutionalized care. Um, and this this team now, which would be from one to two community paramedics that could be out in the community. Um, they can, they can provide, I think, what really underpins the a community program. We're out there helping these people in place, in time. Uh, and really making uh, benefit for for their overall health and the community's health as a whole, as a whole. Uh, next slide, please. So we we've sent out this survey starting in January of twenty twenty-three. This is a client-facing survey, or it might be family members that are filling this out essentially. Uh, how do they feel about their overall health? Um, we've had twenty-five responses, which is pretty decent considering the number of clients we've had. Um, but anyways, the the whole survey supports the reduction of nine-one-one usage. And is a direct correlation to the supports provided by the CPs in the community, the community paramedics. Um, the perception, this number is two point six four. That's the perception of how somebody would rate their health prior to community paramedic involvement. Now, there's no metric beyond how do I rate my health? How do I feel about my health? And then post-enrollment is a four out of five about how they'd rate their health. So I think without without having, you know, the actual details on what they're doing or what they're what they're providing. The reality is, we're going into these people's homes, we're seeing them out in the community. And we can see that they they are reporting to us a significant improvement on how they determine that their health is. And I think this really helps with the mandate of Ontario Health and keeping people in their homes as opposed to up into the institutions and creating more problems. Not them themselves.
If I can just interject for a second, we have a full stop at ten thirty for a closed session, so if we can
Absolutely.
speed it up because I'm sure there might be questions.
Uh, next slide, please.
Thank you.
So this is uh, new data that we've been collecting over the last six months. Um, so this is specific to what I talked about earlier. When when patients are reaching out to the community paramedic program, what would otherwise be a nine-one-one call, we're able to send out a community paramedic to address this person. We've in the last six months alone, we've had a hundred and thirty decreased emergency room transportations. Just because the community paramedic has been able to go out and um, and they've been able to stop that essentially, you know, find more appropriate means or just overall reduction in the nine-one-one calls. Um, and you know, it really shows an appropriate care in the community compared to costly and lengthy traditional means such as the transport to the emergency department. Uh, next slide, please. And this is a quick overview of the entire program. Uh, five hundred fifty-six new enrollments last year, ninety-nine thirty-three current active patients. Uh five hundred fifty-six new enrollments last year, nine hundred ninety-three current active patients. Um I don't have to get into the details too much, but it kind of shows um. An overview of what the program looks and and what our current statistics are. Uh next slide, please. Uh quick demographics, just to show, you know, what we're looking at. Uh primarily female, uh which sort of age brackets we're looking at. Kind of explains itself, so we'll move again and next slide, please. This is city versus county clients. Um so city does show about six hundred. But in in relative comparison, and you can see each each of the dots on that map there is um, they're color-coded by community paramedic. So kind of grouped in certain areas. Um but anyways, having about six hundred of almost a thousand clients in the city, I think is a pretty reasonable balance. Uh some communities would be smaller numbers, but I think as a percentage basis, it's actually pretty, pretty evenly um spread out among the community. Uh next slide, please. And yeah, here's, here's some numbers. Um I'm going to end, I'm going to end the presentation there, but I think, I think you get a pretty good idea of of what I have for you. Thank you. Any questions, please?
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Huntley.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Uh great program and I just, the one question I have is the administrative roles that you're putting in place. I am assuming that they could get, handle more than a capacity of three of your CPs. So as the CPs grow, you're not increasing the administration of.
Uh respectfully through the chair. Um yeah, so we've noticed. We have about uh sixteen regular community paramedics and one in administrative support currently. And you can hardly have a meeting in a room with her, with the amount her phone rings in a day. Um the the need is there where. It's not the the additional administrative support just for the additional positions we're putting now. It's more of an identified need for. The entire group as a whole. The the administrative enhancement is is a long overdue. Um it's it's a need and. The increased client calls and referrals and just that entire navigation that we're trying to do. With people in their homes and the institutions.
Counselor Watson.
Thank you, Deputy Warden, through you. Um I, this is an amazing program. I feel like I I. Two years ago, learned about it through a former chief Mello and. Uh maybe one of the people contributing to the the growth in the number of patients or clients that are coming to you, because I talk it up as much as I can and. Certainly no firsthand um clients who are maximizing the service. Um and and it does certainly reduce the burden. I've I've seen that transition where um clients, patients have. Routinely called nine-one-one and now they're not having to do that. And you know, we all know that the longer they can not go to the hospital, the the less a. Burden it is on the overall healthcare system, but more so, uh you know, the the long, the longer their longevity will be and and support ideally, so. Uh so thank you for bringing this forward and and Deputy Warden, when uh when the time is right, I'm happy to move the recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. So Brett, uh someone, also someone who has firsthand experience with this program, it's a winner. It provides a hugely valuable service uh in our community to our, usually to our seniors. Um I know that's, again, from firsthand experience, some of the challenges with it are regular scheduled visits and that's affected by. This administrative burden that you're talking about, is it affected by perhaps not enough community paramedics? Um shift work, a whole myriad of factors uh complicate that. I cannot imagine. At any time, us now withdrawing the service. We we, I just can't, I can't envision that. So I certainly um I certainly support the the recommendations here to continue it and to enhance it to a certain degree. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Black.
Thank you, through you, Deputy Warden. Uh thanks for the presentation, Brett, and um I'll echo the the previous comments about I've worked in. The health and home care industry for over forty years in my working life and um. It's certain, it's it's changed over the years. Back in the day, uh it was the CCACs, the LYNs, home care, whatever they're called today. Uh used to do this work in the community through nursing services and those sorts of things. What's the connection between this program and um I don't even know what they call it anymore, the home care program, the local home care program, do they? Provide referrals to you? Um is there overlap? Um. How's, I I support this program, more than my previous experience, obviously. Uh but what's the, what's the linkage there? Is there overlap? Are are we doing two things now instead of one? Um.
So respectfully through Deputy Warden, uh yeah, so we're not looking to replace traditional home care services. Nursing at home. What we are and I I really see the value um in the program is being that stopgap. So. You're discharged from a hospital on a Friday afternoon. And you're you're being given home care supports, you're being given nursing for, say, for for room care. And you know, that that referral is now being picked up on Monday. Maybe you have somebody come out into your house by Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Hopefully, you know, somebody in the home is capable of changing those bandages. And this person doesn't ultimately end up back in the hospital. See, where I see really huge value for us, if we, if we're involved, especially in that discharge of that patient. On Friday, we can get a community paramedic in that home by Saturday, Sunday. And make sure that they're okay in their home, they have food in the fridge, they have the community supports, we can change those bandages. We can make sure that that person's not just going to boomerang back to the hospital. Long and the short is, we're at that stopgap. We're, we're integrating ourselves with the the healthcare teams. And we we don't want to replace anybody, we just want to enhance what's out there.
Follow up through you, uh Debbie Ward. Yeah, I I see the short-term benefit of of uh, because often it was, it would take a week or more to get uh nursing staff organized for. Home visits, that sort of thing, but a lot of your clients have been on long-term as well. At what point do you hand them off to the home care program or? Is that even possible today with the funding that is provided to home care?
So respectfully through Deputy Deputy Warden, uh yeah, so. The the admissions and the discharges, to be, to be candid, because the program growing, a lot of our admissions, we've just been collecting them. Uh we're in process right now with Trent University and and bringing in some some nursing students to actually go over. Our admission admission and discharge criteria. So this is something we're looking forward to. Uh we also want to get into more of that short-term handover of patients where we're handling them for forty-eight, seventy-two hours and doing that support. On top of our long-term clients, our long-term clients, I think they're they're great, we're doing great supports. Depending on what their their needs are, two-week checkups, monthly checkups, even three months, six months, depending on if they're managing well in the home. But ultimately not discharging them because. If they had a previous need, there's a good chance they'll need, they'll need the services again in the future and and why go through all the process of of re-enrolling?
Thank you, and I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have the motion before us, uh and it's been moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Black, all in favor. That is carried, thank you. Now, I think before we go any further, we're going to move into closed. If I can have a motion to do that, please. Uh Counselor Armstrong, seconded by Counselor Whalen, all in favor. That is Carrie. We'll take a moment to clear the room and.